It's seven oh one, we'll start this meeting. And we'll start with the pledge, if you please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is a pleasant one. We will do this first, if everybody can. Unfortunately, we have two guys that aren't present yet. I don't know, are you there, Jason?
He's not on yet.
He's not on, okay. Well, um, we made a proclamation. We want to congratulate Spalieri's.
Spagliere's.
Spagliere's.
Thanks for.
I'm sorry. I always just called you Lucy.
Yes, I am.
For forty years in Fairhaven at the Fairhaven Pizza. So we, um, we got a little proclamation, I'll read it. Whereas Luigi and Lucy Spagliere began the Fairhaven Pizza House, um, on May thirteenth nineteen eighty-three, and whereas the success of the Pizza House has contributed to the overall community and economic success of the town of Fairhaven over the past forty years, and whereas the Spagliere family chose to invest in Fairhaven by purchasing thirty-three Main Street for their business and hiring local workers, many being young adults, and whereas the company trained those young adults and provided them with skills they continue to use throughout their lives, and whereas the Spagliere family has become highly respected in our community. Now therefore, by the authority vested in me as a select board chair on behalf of the town of Fairhaven and the Fairhaven Select Board, I, Robert Richards, do hereby deem an honor to present this proclamation to Lucy Spagliere, her late husband Luigi, and the Fairhaven House of Pizza in recognition of its success and in appreciation of its investment and in the commitment to our community. So signed by us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're proud to have you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
But the Fairhaven Pizza House started in a different way.
Did it.
They did, they did. I wasn't too, I wasn't thinking of that at the time. I was, I was given power of attorney and my brother owned that building. And he gave me power of attorney to take care of it because he went back to Italy to live with his in-laws. And every time we came here, we used to see the kids in the park not doing anything. It was like lost souls. And I said to my husband, I said, you know what would be good here is a nice pizza shop with a jukebox, a couple of video games, and then later we got a pool table for the kids, which, which, uh, when I called him, the principal of the grade school, thanked me for it, yeah. And I think he nominated me in who's school, which I was recognized.
Oh, no kidding.
So, um, and that's where we started. That's why the wall exists, because I collected their pictures. And I kept on telling them, this is your place. No one else is going, we tried, you know, we went to dinners and people said, what about wine and beer, whatever? And yes, I did it. And then, you know, the state is out there with his hand. Everything else, everybody's, the township is there with their hands. And my kids, they saw labels of beer in the window, and I didn't like it. I said, I don't want this shit, pardon me, excuse me, because I wanted the kids to come in. I didn't want your adults to come in either. I said, this is for the kids and no one else. And so that was a form of stress relief. And the first few that came in, we were busier than hell. And they were sitting in the window, right in the window table. And they waited and waited, because I was alone. It was just my husband and I. So I went there and I said to them, I said, I want to thank you so much for understanding that I'm busy here and you were very nice to wait. And they looked at me as if I had three heads. I said, don't these kids get praised? And I told them, you don't have to have money to come here. And with our fortieth anniversary that we did, which none of you were there, and I told Eileen that we were having that to invite you people. I have such wonderful stories. I guess my husband and I influenced a lot of children.
You certainly did.
And also, we took care of a lot of kids that we didn't know. One of the ones, the sisters came and she, the mother took off and her brother was little and, uh, he came in, I guess, after school. He would walk after school to come to my place and he was going to be there that day. But it got late and he had to go back. So I'm not mentioning any names. So one year we decided also that the adults had their New Year's Eve party. I said, I want you guys to have a New Year's Eve party here too. And if it works out, we'll have it every year. Well, one of the girls called and said, if my parents call, tell them that I'm there. And Julie Aiken, who was working for us at that time, said, we're not lying for anybody. And that was the end of that party. But we did, and when they had dances here at the grade school, they would call in, Lucy, are you going to be staying open? I said, yes, I am. And so they continued their little dance. And I said, dance if you want to, do whatever you want, release your stress and leave your parents alone when you get home. And so at the end of the night, I would say, you kids have to call for rides. And there was always one or two that didn't have one, so we took them home. So that we didn't hear from the township that kids weren't being taken care of.
I cannot remember a complaint of kids hanging out or never.
As you can see from my wall, I love children.
Every.
I love them, all the little ones. And, uh, we had such a gift. God brought us here to make a difference.
Well, you did.
And I think we did. And I wish I was thirty-six again.
There.
But I don't know where God is going to take us. And, uh, I do have it for sale. Who knows what's going to happen? But I'm going to be there as long as he allows me to be.
Good. We really appreciate it.
And when it's done, then God has other things. Hopefully a little rest, because I'm not a spring chicken anymore.
Everybody deserves that, believe me.
I am dead. And being in Fairhaven that Saturday from morning till night took a lot of, both of us. Do you have anything to say Frankie? Did you enjoy being in Fairhaven?
Yeah.
Did you enjoy?
When I was in school, I was a period.
Yeah. Of course, my son Frankie gave up his life too. So he lost touch with his fellow students that he went to school with.
The pictures on the wall attest to, I think every kid's picture is on that wall.
I love my children.
Yep.
They're our kids, and they know that I love them.
Two, three generations.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God, yeah.
And they knew that. I meant business, if they created any problem, I'd kick their butts.
I can personally, I personally attest that you saved me a couple of times when I was supposed to cook dinner. Either, either a pie or a jar of your sauce. And that sauce is the best stuff in the world.
You mean like the wife that buys the food and then at the end, you know, they eat and then she puts flour in her face and the little girl says, and then you get taken out to dinner? Which she bought the food.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Thank you very.
Happy to be there.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
We're gonna, we're gonna go, we're gonna move on, but we can't thank you enough for being.
Thank you very, very much. And I, we are very honored for this. Thank you so much. This is going to be on our wall in Fairhaven.
I'll send the other, I'll send the other two selectmen down to sign.
Okay, great. I'll be there tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks a lot. All right, thank you for coming in.
And then after that, they're on their own. Thank you again. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Keep up the good work.
I'm good.
I'm doing well, thank you so much. She's gone.
Awesome.
And all the furniture there, and she called me wanting it and I didn't call her back. Have a good day.
See you later.
See you later. Amendments to the agenda?
I have one if the board so chooses. It's a review of the park lighting and park and ride.
The bids?
Fids, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to add under new business, C, review of the park and ride and light, and the lights in the park bids.
I'll second that.
I have a question. Why would that be in, um, or that's not, that's not an executive session, right? That's just a regular.
No, that's just.
Okay, okay.
And I didn't.
Getting ahead of myself.
I didn't get the information until just this afternoon.
Okay. So that would be new business?
And the new business, C.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to have to be unanimous until Jason gets on.
Yeah, still no Jason.
Five minutes for public comment, which I don't see a lot of public here. So we'll move on. Department head report. Oh, I'm sorry, I checked it off. Approval of the minutes of May second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve of the minutes from May second as written.
I'll second that.
Any additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Still the same with five minutes for public comment. Department head.
I can't be here and up there. So we had just two arrests in the last two weeks. One was for a domestic assault and mischief from reckless endangerment and a violation of conditions of release. Outside of that, the criminal side was steady. We did sixty-four traffic tickets, twenty written warnings, two parking violations and two car traffics. No, no overweight permits in the last two weeks. I think they're pretty much done for the year other than stragglers. And we did twenty sets of prints. We're at two hundred and four for those for the year.
Really?
That's a pretty good stream. This was, the month was down. So far, April was down from prior months, but.
Makes sense.
That'll kick back up again about August or September. I get a lot of compliments because we're the only ones that seem to be available most anytime. And other agencies, for some reason, they all want to do it. I don't know if that's cumbersome or not, but it seems to work pretty well. I think we're at fifteen or sixteen thousand maybe this year or more than that. I don't have a final figure, but I'll get that closer to the end of the year, sort of fiscal year. Review of, I did a quick review of activity in there. If you see anything that stands out, there's not a ton. I did issue a junk violation for one of the fairlights in the sheriff's department. There's probably twenty cars down there starting to get worse and it didn't, we had the other people there. Trying to address with the individual. I'm not talking. The dog complaint at Apple Tree, the animal control officer went up there and one of the officers that handled the original case went up there. The dog appears to be gone again. I'm not so believable that it isn't gone. I think we're playing the not here game. I think it's coming and going. He denies it was his, but there's a dog food in the bag there. And the complainants identified it by name. So we're going to send some more violations and if we get the dog, I think we're probably going to season it per the order you guys did last year, which Glenn reminded me the last meeting.
He's been, he's been warned.
Yes, a lot.
Yeah.
And he's always, like, he's defiant with the officers and I don't understand why, like, we tried to work with him.
Yeah, I know.
That's the thing.
I don't really have any, any notes at the moment. I did put in for another, which I know the last ones that come online, yeah. I can't, DPW's tied up doing other stuff, but I'm going to put in for another one of this whole amount of speed signs. We gave another four thousand dollars in grant money. That'll lead up to about thirty-five hundred. And then placement, I'm not sure yet. I was thinking West Street, Capitol Hill, or Dunton Avenue or South Side, or one of the major inlets in the town to post another one of those signs. But I thought that was, we can buy radars and lasers, but we have all the stuffs. And it's not that old, so I thought we'd utilize it on something.
Probably works as well as.
Yeah, it's a good deterrent. And they can be moved. I noticed that Politt has them on and they move them probably every three or four months. They'll put them at a different location around the town. So I think that's kind of what I'm getting to. I did talk to Nate, he has the sign. He asked me where I wanted. I did tell him back on Capitol Hills where originally planned. I wanted to try it there and I'm not seeing it materialize yet. So I'm going to talk to Nate again. Let me know they were doing the Culver and Hoy projects.
Yep.
The only other thing that I was wondering about, if we do any paving or do any work, like that, that driveway got redone. Nate did a really good job about five years ago, but it's starting to get potholes when you go out in the car and get pounded into the back area. If that's something we can, even if it's more of that, um, the grinds. That worked really well last time. Maybe put another little shim coat on there just to. And then the driveway out here too has some potholes. I know some of it's on the other side, but I think we've been maintaining it. So there's some good holes right in this area.
Probably wait until the containers come.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, again, I'm good with that. Just while I was thinking about it, we're doing building work. It'd be nice to try to get that one spot done again. I did do a quick, um, the revenue report. Like I said, we did seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is low for fingerprinting. Overweight payments was thirty-five. We did do four thousand eleven traffic fines for April. I think we're at thirty thousand on that. Not that we're funded the department that way, but we, but the way, I think I talked about how we're prosecuting the cases and we're working with people, it does seem to benefit everybody. I think we're at the thirty thousand this year, which is more than normal. Parking fines was forty-five and then security details was eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and then the SRO reimbursement. So I think that's all I have. I don't know if you guys have anything for me that you can think of. We did have a quick pursuit this afternoon on a motorcycle. If anybody calls, I could hear it. He went down West Street, we did not catch him. I thought he did, figured out who it was. And they just had shoplifting arrests. It was in shop on a traffic stop and they were wheeling out with a beer and they were like, right in front of us, I grabbed him and took him. So that's why I was doing ten minutes ago.
That's bad timing.
Yeah.
I think that's all I have that I can think of. I may have a part-time or thinking about retiring.
Thinking.
Thinking about retiring, so I'm not going to say any names. And I have an officer that just came back from military deployment. He may only be here a month and go back out on another deployment. Joe authorized it. I did, I do have two replacements to fill in for them. One is the Politt Constable, certified. Politt Patriot training. And then the other one is a level three certified officer. Lives right on River Street in Fairhaven. His name's Dan, first one's Tom Cabean. The other is Dan Pennington. He's a level three certified, works full-time at the police academy, left the sheriff's department and wanted to keep his cert. He wanted to work, he wanted to get back to the community. So if you see the strange names on the payroll, they started this week. I think Dan's going to be a really good asset because we should be able to get in his off hours and if he has any instructorships to put on like a two-hour class here so we won't have to go to the academy, he'll be able to do it here. It's cheaper to pay him a part-time salary to come and do two hours of class than to send a guy up to the academy and pay for classes. So that's my long-term goal with him is to be able to provide us in-house training to meet everybody's training needs, depending on what service he gets. And he lives in town, which is a benefit, which is perfect. I think that's all I got.
Questions, Chris?
No.
No, thank you.
No, it's good, thanks.
Thanks a lot for the work you're doing.
I did have a property owner downtown, in the downtown block, say thank you for Sherri, to Sherri from Mark and Tires. She was down there, she was down there checking, uh, people had parked a little bit too long. So they appreciate it. I'm up.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm going to jump up and down a little bit just to keep my knee stretched out. So I'm not freaking out here, I'm just.
How you doing?
Good, just get stiff.
Okay, we'll start with, we'll start with DPW tonight. If you were downtown today, you saw the DPW's putting the fountain in the park and they filled the fountain up, so that thing should be, should be running right now. They were out in the cemetery. We had a tree come down over here on West Street. They removed some, this was last week, they removed some more. And we did pay somebody to come and take down a big leader off one of those trees because it was just getting robbed. The crew is still out mowing when they have time. They're trying to knock that back. Potholes, they're plugging up the potholes as they pop up. We had two sewer plugs last week. They managed to get both of those undone. And we had a water line repair that had to be fixed over the water line that runs into the park, to the restaurant trailer, so they fixed that as well. So the guys have been busy. And that's not to, that's not to say the Scott Hill, they replaced the culvert, culvert Scott Hill. Found a beaver living in one of the, in the new culvert they just put in. Had to, had to evict that little guy. So he was, he was busy making a dam right at the new culvert that they just put in. From my office, well, from Town Hall, Eileen and Phil are still working on that permit packet, Bob. They need to get back in to get, get all the paperwork, but we're still moving forward with that. It's been the Eli show lately. So if you've read the, anything, Eli Charlton was asked to come speak at the, the big water wastewater conference they have every year in Vermont. So he got to get up and talk about our program, how much he loved it, I'm sure. And it was in front of four hundred people. So, yeah, he's, he's been doing great these last few months. For everybody on television, staff is moving back into Town Hall Thursday morning, so you won't have to visit the wastewater plant anymore to pay your bills. You can come visit us here in Town Hall.
But Thursday's going to be closed.
Thursday we're going to be closed, we're opening up Friday. Just to set expectations though, there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done though. So if you come in the building, there is going to be paper on the floor. Some doors need to be put in and then some, the transaction windows later this week. But we're getting to the point where we're going to open back up to the public so that way we don't have to go down there.
Is the floor under the paper?
The carpet is in, yes.
The carpet.
The floor is in, that's protection?
Yeah, that's just as they work. They don't want to scratch it up or, or, you know, just get it any dirtier than they have to. Thursday at three thirty, we're going to, we're going to have a building committee meeting. So if anybody's interested in coming to that. We're also having an active shooter training between one and three that same day. I figure that's a, that's kind of an important thing to have in the world we live in.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. And maybe you saw, maybe you didn't see, but the hydro flushing began on Monday. And that's all the excitement from my office.
I will let my neighbor know.
Let her know.
Good, thank you.
Got a quick question. What time do you say that buildings committee meeting was, what?
Three, three thirty.
Three thirty Thursday?
Yep. We're trying to get all departments together. Now we're starting to open up space. We want to have everybody's input. It's, it can't just be the Joe show. Like there are too many demands on the space now. It's important to get everybody's opinion.
Appointing of rescue squad, they're not here yet, so we'll go to the revolving loan fund?
I think we're just, we're just going to appoint. I don't think they're coming.
I don't, yeah.
Oh, it's just the appointment? I thought they were, I thought they were going to come in. Okay, so you, did you have any other interest?
Nope, nobody else was interested.
Okay, that makes it easy.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ms. Alexandra Foley Bowen as our representative on the Fairhaven Rescue Squad.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome on board, Mrs. Bowen.
All right. Now we'll go to the revolving. Revolving loan fund review. Is that you or?
Well, I'm up, Joe's going to start off and I'll support him.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. So we did get a, we did get a request for a loan for, for the revolving loan fund. This is Deborah Lyakona. I hope I said that correctly. She's starting a small bistro, she's starting a bistro downtown Fairhaven in what they call the old bank building. She's requesting fifteen thousand dollars to help, to help buy a little bit of equipment, signage, permitting tables, you know, all the things you need to start your business. She's renting the space. Her sister bought the property from Ms. Brown and her sister is giving her a decent rate of, for rent in the lower half. Terms for this are, it's a zero percent interest loan per our policy, three-year term per the policy with the one-year grace period.
And it'll be called Ruby's Bistro?
Ruby's Bistro.
Ruby's Bistro is a combination, I guess, that's going to have bakery items as well as reasonably priced food for lunches and dinner.
No, Ruby, R-U-B-Y?
Yes.
Apostrophe X.
And the, so they came in and following our policy, the Economic Development Committee reviewed it, looked at it, and they, they voted to recommend to the select board approving the revolving loan for fifteen thousand.
They entertained that motion then.
I want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I add something else to my report?
Sure.
Just very quickly. So we do the, we do the grant competition once a year to help our local businesses start business or expand. We were able to disburse ten thousand dollars to, um, oh my gosh.
The, the wine tasting at the.
Joe Laramie, he's, him and his wife started.
Joan Caroline Laramie?
Yep, yep. So we were able to get down there ten thousand dollars.
Good.
It's a real bright spot.
And that's not a loan to pay back?
That's a grant. We just got some money for them.
Is there other people interested in knowing that route or that's all we've heard from so far?
The grant funding? And we do it once a year. It's towards the back and towards the end of the year. We do have one other business that received a grant last year, which was, my mind is slipping, the Places You'll Grow Daycare.
Daycare.
They won twelve thousand dollars last year. We'll do the competition again, I think it's in October.
But we still have money in our revolving loan for businesses to loan out. We've had three other businesses gather information. They just haven't applied for a loan yet. But there's still money there. So we're still looking to support any new business that wants to come in here.
Whatever we can do to help, within reason.
Mm-hmm. It has to be new business, not existing.
Only ends existing as well, if they want to expand.
Waterline loan review and approval.
So this was the state revolving loan fund. This is the loan from the state to help us do the engineering on the front end of the bond, that big, all the work that we're going to do for the bond. And that finally, they finally got us the paperwork. So this is the approval for that. It's a loan amount of seventeen, seventeen thousand and the payments don't start, I think, until like twenty twenty-four or something? It's a long way out.
Does that get rolled?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Does that get rolled into the bond?
I don't think so, no. It's, I had, yeah, I had this conversation with him about another revolving loan fund. And I'll ask again, but the current one we have that's going to do up next year, it's, it's separate from the bond payment for the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask.
It should be, I mean, it should go, that's what it's for.
Yeah. So, but I'll ask again.
Okay.
So you're looking for motion, I'll make a motion that we accept.
Accept and approve here?
And approve the revolving loan fund for the water.
This is the water, water line upgrade downtown Fairhaven.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
I do have some paperwork to.
Is that the water line that's coming?
Yes.
That's the water line where they came in and talked, I think, at our last meeting that they're going to, downtown and up on Washington Street was a piece of it?
Yep.
It's close to the river around to Adams. River Street around, but Adams Street.
Down Prospect.
Yeah, Liberty to.
Yeah, down towards Adams.
To Adams, yeah.
Middle of town, middle of town, right?
I think.
Yeah.
It'll stop at, it'll stop at Marble Liberty Street.
At least that's.
Down the hill, cross the bridge, down Prospect.
So it is starting at Liberty Street, at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
That's, that's what they said in the meeting anyway. And then the other part of the water line is the one up on Washington Street.
Yep.
Somewhere just the other side of Shaw's to the interstate?
Yep, right by Jiffy Mart. They're upgrading those lines, they're making them bigger.
Yeah, but we've had trouble with those lines for a while.
And they're looping it, yeah. Bob, I have, so there are a few spots in here to sign. Some of them are just for Bob and then some of them for the whole board. So you're going to have to kind of pick through. So you're gonna have to kind of pick through it. Here's one for the board.
Um, while we're doing that, let's do the review of the bid. Of the park and ride, I believe that's what we got, right?
The state did their review of the two, we did receive two bids. Um, one bid was considered, uh, not responsive is what they call it, they didn't provide all of the information to the state, so they threw that bid out. Uh, the only remaining bid is from Belden, uh, their base, their base bid is eight hundred and forty-nine thousand thirty-three dollars. Upgrade to the, to the antique lights is an additional seventy-nine thousand dollars. Uh, just for the construction.
What's the difference from the original bid?
I don't understand. Oh, oh, the, the first time around?
Yeah.
About almost a hundred thousand dollars, a little more than a hundred thousand.
Less or more?
Less.
See, this is, in, in the real world, we could say sharpen your pencil.
Yeah.
But we can't, because there's too many people involved, too many agencies involved.
Is, is this the one, just to calibrate me though? The bid has come out higher than what we, quite a bit higher than what we're looking for. Uh, we, we are going to, there's supposed to be, uh, some monies we can apply for to help cover some of the overrun. There's no guarantees we'll get it, but there's, there's monies that we can recoup some. Okay, and, uh, so when I read through this right here. To get the lighting in the park and the park and ride completed this year and go forward, we're gonna need to, we're gonna come about a hundred and forty thousand short or?
Without any?
Without any, we have the monies we set aside, but we're gonna need an additional.
You're gonna, so you, the town can fund these two projects this year. Um, moving into next year though, is where we'll end up tight with money. We have the sidewalk project that's still sitting out there and there's grant match that's gonna be required for that.
But if we, we're, if we take the best case scenario, we go ahead and do this, we get reimbursed some additional COVID money because of the prices are up and everything is fine, that's the best case scenario in my mind. Or even with that, that's not the best case.
That's, that is the best case scenario, but we'd still be short in next year.
But ne, but that's, I'm just saying, that, because in order to do it this year, we need to take about a hundred thousand from the sidewalk.
Yes, correct.
Project.
Yes.
But I'm saying, so whether, but if you're asking for how board members are thinking about it. We really, our experience has been, every time we put off, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars more when we go back again. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying we need to do the lighting in the park and ride this year. If that means next year, because we've got six months we have to wait for the review of the sidewalk anyway.
Yep.
That gives us time to apply for additional COVID monies.
And we're in the budget season, we, maybe we can find some.
And maybe we can do something in the fall, so I'm saying that worst case scenario, next year we're a hundred, a hundred and forty thousand dollars short of being able to do the sidewalk. That may mean that we need to, if we don't find the monies, we push the sidewalk out. I, if we had to, I'd feel more comfortable doing that. I don't feel comfortable not doing this lighting that we've been talking about for years now. We, we, we need to get that done, I, that's just my two cents.
Just for your, to reinforce your opinion too, first of all, the first bid came in at, at three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars high. So this one is two hundred and eighty-three thousand above the original bid, it's not gonna get lower. And I think we, we, I just will strike while the iron is hot, it, it's, and if we have to push a, a project out further, we have to push a project out further, I don't see any other way around it.
I don't know what you think, Rich.
Well, I think the lights in the park are important. I don't know if the, the parking ride's quite as important, but it's kind of lumped together.
Well, we'll get, we'll get that before we get paving over there.
Well, right, right, it's more with me, it's the, when that Route Four paving comes in, we really should have.
We should be ready.
That, that, everything, everything's.
That would be the sidewalk project, Route Four paving.
Yeah.
Well, if we put that off, we're not gonna get that done anyway.
Well, let's not.
So.
Let's not think worst case scenario, but that's a possibility, we have to look at that realistically.
It's a definite possibility, 'cause if there's no money, there's no money.
Right, aside, clearly the sidewalks that, the sidewalks at risk, and I say, worst case scenario, we can't, we, we just can't afford to do the, the sidewalk? Well then, you know how we had our discussions a couple, a week ago, a last meeting about putting the sidewalk? Well, we do, we do the sidewalk in segments or something and, and it goes on, it, it probably gets out higher on our priority list and we, 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 we find another way to get there. I'm gonna sit and, and feel the glass is half full, 'cause that's just me, and expecting that we're going to get some help to take that money that we're having to use from the sidewalk and we're gonna get reimbursed so that the money we use from sidewalk, we can put most of it back. Uh, now, maybe I'm looking at the world through rose colored glasses, but that's, I, I, I wanna, I'd rather be optimistic about it. I, I don't mind being realistic to say the downtown sidewalk may need to be pushed out. But I think we gotta finish those two projects.
Yeah, and I think we gotta get the original one done and then see where we are. And if we have to go out further, that's fine, Rome wasn't built in a day, but it'd be nice to get it in a year or two.
But if.
So what do you need from us?
Yeah, right, what's the, what's the next steps, if, are you looking for us to accept the bid and then you can go and get things rolling or?
Yep, we'll, we'll, I'll need, uh, an accept, acceptance of Belden's bid for the, um, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand plus the alter, the bid alternative of seventy-nine thousand for the antique lighting. Um, but I'm also gonna need authorization to then use our funds, so.
The ARPA fund?
Uh, ARPA funds.
Sidewalk.
The, moving the match from the sidewalk, uh, project to this project. Um, grant match reserve of a hundred thousand and then streets and sidewalks of twenty-five thousand.
Is that all?
That's it. It's, this is the most.
Let's start, let's start with the big one and work our way down.
But, and let me, before we start approving all that, I just, I know I just sat here and said we need to move forward. I wanna just make sure we consciously say that, we have two board members that aren't weighing in right now. And, uh, are we comfortable making this decision without the full board?
Generally speaking, I would say no, but we're in the building season already.
Oh.
And I, I don't know, I'm not confident we're gonna be able to get much more than the lights done this year, to be honest with you.
It's, uh, just, did they indicate, uh, schedule, the work schedule with this or not?
Yep, so in the bid, they're supposed to have the lights in the park done, I wanna say by the end of July now. Um, that might've been bumped out, I'd have to read the bids, but the park lights are supposed to be done this year. Uh, the park and ride, they have the option to bump it out one year.
To next year.
To next year, till like spring of next year.
There'll be plenty of time to revisit.
Okay.
And possibly find some other funding.
So, it, so we're comfortable?
I would say let's get, at least get the park, the park and light done for sure.
That, that will be done.
Is this the order which you want the motions to come in?
So these are, this is already, this is already allocated to the two grants we're talking about, I just need these.
Okay, and I'll do them in, I'll do them in order then. I'll make a motion, uh, that we take a hundred thousand dollars from the downtown sidewalk match to apply to our lighting in the park and park and ride.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason's not on yet?
Okay.
Okay, the next one is I'm gonna make a.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Take a hundred thousand dollars from sidewalk to apply to park and ride?
Right, it's the sidewalk match that we had, it was our grant match, yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to take a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from our ARPA funds.
Okay.
To apply to the lighting in the park and the park and ride.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Who's unanimous?
I'll make a motion to take a hundred thousand dollars from the grant match reserve a, and apply it to the park lighting and park and ride project.
Second?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, last one, Jason, I'll make a motion to take twenty-five thousand dollars from streets and sidewalks and apply it to the park lighting and park and ride project.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. That gives us the amount.
It should be noted that the concerts in par, in the park donated money to the, or contributed money to this from their proceeds.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
From the CD, yeah.
This twenty-five thousand is.
Sidewalk.
Streets and sidewalks.
Streets and sidewalks.
It's not the, it's not the park, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that the concerts in the park had donated money.
Okay, that was in your regional funding, yeah.
Where's, where's the rest of this money coming from?
The rest of it's already in grant funding and the match that we had applied to it already.
Okay. We're just adding. Yeah, because it's higher, we've gotta come up with a diff, the percentage doesn't change.
We're four hundred and fifteen dollars, four hundred and five thousand dollars right here.
That's right.
Just look, my calculations are.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was, already for the park and ride, there was three hundred and, almost three hundred and ninety-nine thousand already for that project. And then the park lights already had almost two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, two forty-eight.
So, just for discussion here, you have three hundred and ninety-nine in a park and ride? And what was it, what was the parking, park lights again?
Let me give you the calculations.
It'll be right there, we should have it.
The two projects are gonna cost a little over a million dollars, Rich, if you're adding them up. The exact, one million fifty-two thousand six hundred.
They started out at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Back in twenty nineteen.
The original, the original, um, estimate for the lights were seventy-five thousand, way back when, way back when.
Now this inspection, that's an outside inspector, an inspection on this?
Yep, the, the state requires us to have a, an onsite engineer.
Not an EIC.
Yeah.
Yep. All good?
Mm-hmm.
All good on that? Um, water and sewer budget, first look, that is something I'm not comfortable talking about without everybody here. And I don't, I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room, as usual, in the water and sewer budget. We just have to figure out how to make it affordable.
Yeah, and.
That's our job.
And, and the numbers you gave us was basically just to start us thinking so that we could do our line by line?
Yes.
With the full group?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I wanted to mention, and I talked to Joe about this, and, and I wanted to just plant the seed. One of the things we did in the last bond issue was split the payment between the general fund and the water and sewer fund. The, the bond payment when that starts. The thought process was that everybody benefits from water and sewer, even if they're not on water, water and sewer. So some of the general fund donates toward the water and sewer bond. The last time we split it fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we do that this time or not, or if we just, some, some payment to, to acknowledge the fact that the water and sewer, whether it's fire hydrants or whether it's whatever, um, the fact that we can afford to have people come into this town and we have the water and sewer capacity, whatever it is, there's a benefit for the entire town and the thought process, the last time was the general fund could, could take some of that, some of that pressure off the water and sewer payers. And that's what we did, and I just wanna plant that seed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's the discussion we'll have in this mess when we get through that.
Okay.
Jason? Linda Barker just joined and it looks like Deborah is joining as well. Hi Linda, can you hear us? Oh, nobody can hear us. Hi Linda, can you hear us now? Yeah, the mics are picking her up, maybe she just, maybe her mic's not working.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna move on from that.
Push someone else?
Yeah. Um, anything in the parking lot that is of? Oh, I, well, go ahead, anything there?
On the parking lot, I think if we just, the decision we just made took ARPA spending off the, off the things, so we can remove ARPA spending.
Sure, I think you're right.
Um.
Downtown designation we were talking about tomorrow night?
Mm-hmm.
So that'll be on the, that's on the agenda for the planning commission tomorrow. Town plan is in the same boat.
It's a good yard of spending, it's gone.
Right, that's what I'm saying, take it out of the list, we spent the money.
Send it before the Republicans take it back into the budget.
Moving right along.
Hey, I get my digs where I can. Um, so, uh, if there's nothing else there, we'll go to board roundtable.
Anything for you?
Um, the only thing I have is the DPW crew's been doing a pretty good job. They seem to be everywhere right now. Yeah, I seen them a lot, they're here, they're there, it's just they're moving around like gangbusters and they've done a decent job up on Scotch Hill so far.
I saw them, what they've done so far, yeah.
Yeah, I went up there one day and it was, the coat was pretty well packed, full of crap, I had washed in and then since then the beavers moved in. I had to pull the truck and Nate met me up there and we pulled all the crap out of there once, so. Uh, but eventually someone, we're gonna have to deal with some, uh, um, brush and stuff that's falling in that swampy area. 'Cause that's what's backing a lot of that water up. Yeah, as them trees fall in there, it bonds it back. And, and then the bogs grow and pretty soon you got water backed up through there, so.
So is that a, that like an August kind of thing when it's dried out a little bit, or you wanna get after it right out?
It can be done most any time.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I need, we need to get up there and do some more, uh, planning. Well, other than that, I mean. Well, they're, I was glad to see them put the waterfall in today, 'cause I did have a couple people asking when that was gonna happen. And I told them, so we're gonna get snow tomorrow night.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it might freeze tomorrow.
No worry. But then I see it working out today, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, keep the water running, yeah.
That's all I have, I have it.
I'm good.
Um, where, it's, it's, you just got the stuff today, I know for the transfer station for the defilements there, but, uh, um, so, so that will be an immediate, um, I, I think they gave you seven days to get some of that stuff fixed.
Yep, I'm, uh, I'm supposed to be on vacation starting tomorrow, but I'm gonna come in and meet, um, DPW down at the transfer station at eleven o'clock, go over everything that needs to be done. So.
It's pretty simple stuff, I mean.
It's, it's real basic stuff and some of it we took care of already.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so it's.
Alright.
They were working down there this afternoon.
We're, we're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's at this point.
And, you know, it's, it's like everything else, if you get a guy that's in a, in a bad mood, you'll find a lot of stuff, if you get a, he's a good mood, you won't find anything. And so, next time, get some donuts, get some donuts down there before he shows up.
Well, I think I'll, get your blood sugar up.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, review of financials.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-four thousand.
Got it.
Seven, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Was that thirty-four?
Thirty-four thousand, seven forty-two, eighty-six.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Make a motion to pay the general warrants of five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and five cents. There was a school payment in there that took a big chunk of that, if you're wondering why it's so.
Do you want a second?
I'll second that.
School payment of four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, um. I can't, I can't read that, a loan is fifteen thousand paid and new, new more was the twelve thousand there that we, that we. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And the checkbook balance is seven hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Okay. Alright, so, do you have an executive session or do we?
We do.
Rat.
Okay, I'll make, uh, look at this, five minutes, I, I'll make a motion to go into it.
I should have a bad knee more often.
Executive session for personnel under one, VSA three thirteen A three.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.